Good evening. This is the June 1st, 2016 meeting of the planning board. First item on the agenda is a special permit hearing for Lisa Ekus, 57 North Street. And I'll read the public notice. "A public hearing will be held by the Hatfield Planning Board in Memorial Town Hall, 59 Main Street, Hatfield, Massachusetts on June 1, 2016 at 6:30 PM on an application filed by Lisa Ekus, Assessor's Map 214, Lot 18, currently zoned rural residential for the purpose of creation of a second dwelling unit attached to the existing single-family house at 57 North Street, Hatfield, Massachusetts. The new dwelling unit shall be comprised of renovating existing space and a new addition totaling approximately 1,500 square feet with parking for three additional vehicles accommodated. In accordance with Section 3.0 Use Regulations, Subsection 1.14, conversion of existing single-family to two-family use not in a mixed-use development set forth by the zoning bylaws." And the way we'll conduct the hearing is the applicant will make their presentation, and then we'll open discussion to the folks on the floor who might have any comments or questions. They'll address it to the board, and we'll get the questions answered, or we'll answer the questions if they pertain to us. We'll then give the applicant time for rebuttal, and then we may or may not close the hearing depending on how things go, and if we close the hearing, then we will vote on the issue. So, Ms. Ekus, you have the floor.
Thank you, gentlemen. So I've been here on North Street for 33 years, continuing to renovate my property, and my parents are now elderly, and my intent is to build this, I can't call it an in-law, but a law apartment for my parents. They spent 35 years in Conway, Mass. They've been in Florida. They can no longer be on their own. They're with me. This is my third summer with them, and they can't do the stairs. It's not handicapped accessible. So my intent is to build them a place for however long they have left. My dad is 85. My mom will be 81 this month. I have something like 10, 12 parking spots. It will be very, very much contained within the existing footprint which Mark has. I have drawings for everybody, both elevations and interior. I have a letter from one of my abutters. I don't know if any others arrived to you all. What else do you need to know?
Well, we'd like to see the plans. If you could give us each a copy of the plan so we could look at it. Do we have any, did we receive any letters or anything from?
I have one that's on, you know, it's wound up with the plans. And I also put outside illustrations, and there's well-stated.
Do you want to explain the plan? Either you or Mark.
Mark will do that as my architect.
Yeah, your agent.
My intent is to use J.D. Ross for construction. Mark is my architect, and my goal is to start as soon as I can because of my folk situation. So, thank you.
So you can see on this main plan, the PB1, we'll just start with that one because that has the most information on it. Starting at the bottom, you can see it's sunny here. Sunny, comprised of about four and a half acres. We have about 220 feet on north side. Most of the buildings on the property, well, the buildings are comprised of a single-family dwelling, lots of barns, stable, and then with a home office business use in the back of them would be of the barns there. There's a driveway that comes in on the south side of the house, where there is about seven parking spaces on this side. The owner, Lisa, also has a right-of-way through the neighbor's property for access to the back of the property, where you see six spaces delineated. Those are existing spaces. So there's two ways of access from, through her property and through the neighbor's property. She has a right-of-way. The idea is, as she mentioned, to build approximately 1,500 square feet of additional space for her parents, and that will comprise of two bedrooms, two baths, and a living kitchen, dining area, and a little entry foyer. So what you see here in this plan, it outlined in blue, is the total building area on the site. The yellow areas are the areas that are going to be renovated, and this little T shape here is actually the addition that's going to be put on the building. If you look at some of the photographs of the back of the building, there's an existing barn, which is about 16 by 25.
Is that the existing barn?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the middle right?
Yeah. Which is proposed to be removed, to make way for the addition on that side of the property. So that's where that little T would go, and that's where the barn would be removed. So the addition goes here on the north side, and then this interior portion of the barn would be renovated, and this section here would become, which is also part of the barn, would become a garage. So where you could actually, your parents could pull in to that point, walk from inside to get into the unit, the second. It would all be on one level. It would not be on the same level as the main house. It would be down about three and a half feet, just due to the grade and the existing conditions of the buildings. There would be access through the garage and through this way, and there would also be a parking space on the other side, and there would be access to the unit from the backside as well. So if a caregiver was needed or something like that, there could be independent access from the other side as well. So the elevation, I mean, you can look at a little more detail of the plan here, the two bedrooms, the bath, the living/dining kitchen space along here, and then the entrance from the inside in through here, and then there's a laundry and some, a second bathroom as well. There's access to a yard in the back here and access to a yard in the front as well. The elevation drawings are the second page, and those are rather preliminary, but you can see some window changes that would occur in the existing, in the existing structure. It would be kind of a gut renovation for some of the interior space, new walls, all new interior, new windows, and of course, the addition on the north side, you can see the single-story, pink addition. So it's quite unobtrusive. Whether, I don't, I'm not sure that anybody from this road can actually see the new addition because it's down the hill and it's hidden by the other structures and places, and that's it. So that's pretty much the totality of it. The actual, when you demolish, the net increase after you demolish the barn is about 575 square feet, so that's about the total of the additional square footers that were put on the property. So, that's it.
My question is the parking spaces. I mean, you have a whole bunch of them. The spaces to the, on the north side of the building?
Yeah.
At that west end, those six spaces, are those for the office area that's shown on the plan?
I think that's, that's pretty much true.
Yes, it is. We only use three.
Okay. When you say "we."
Me. I always say "we."
You mean personally, not the business?
My, I, we have two employees who use those spaces.
Okay, so the office or the business uses three spaces?
Correct.
And the rest are just there?
Right.
Okay. And then the six on the south side?
Company.
Okay.
Your parents still drive?
My father drives. My mother does not drive. I don't know how long my father will be driving. He's okay during the day right now, and I keep a spare vehicle for him full-time. So there won't be an additional car in there. It'll be the one I have.
Okay. I just wanted clarification on how the spaces were used and how they were going to be dedicated, so.
They got 13. No, 14.
Yeah, well, this would be, I would assume that the north ones would be the business use, and the south ones would be for the residential use.
Correct.
You need three per dwelling unit, so you have six there, and actually you have the seventh with the garage. Oh, there's another one over here, too.
One there.
Okay, that's for quick getaways, I guess.
We have a lot of company.
Okay, well, good for you. Does anybody on the floor have anything to say? Questions? Yes, ma'am? Oh, please state your name and address for the record so that we can get it into the record.
Susan McGlue, 60 North, and also in 140 Chestnut, but 60 North is the reason we're here. So I just wanted to express that we have been neighbors with Lisa for decades. We feel like they always do very tasteful and beautiful work on their property. We have no concerns whatsoever, and having just retrofitted 60 North to accommodate my parents as they aged in place, we fully understand what they're going through. Just want to be here to support that.
Very good. Thank you.
I'd like to second that. Third and fourth. We all agree she's a hero.
You want?
Where's the access to those six spots? The access to those six spots to the north?
What's the question? Where is it?
Where's the access?
It's through David Short's property, 59 North Street.
Is he here?
He's on the other side of, the other side of the building.
Is he here?
That's the property that butts my house, 39 King. We call it the business, Shorty's property. I'm her abutter to the north. I have no problems with what Lisa wants to do either. I think it's a very noble thing.
Why don't you give us your name for the record?
Leanne Pedruski, 39 King Street.
Okay. So, okay, do you have a right-of-way?
Yes, I do.
You have a document that says you can?
Yes, I do. It's legal, it's filed.
You can go through that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So that, he can't, he can't tell you, no, don't do it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Is that what you were leading into?
Yes, and he's here to say he's...
He's not here, though.
Oh, I thought that was the gentleman.
No, that's the, that's the neighbor.
The other side.
Neighbor to the north.
King Street side.
King Street side.
Actually, my driveway is on North Street. My front door is on King Street, so you figure it out. I walk their mail over every day, so I'm used to it.
In the landscaping that's shown, the trees, you've got 15-foot hamlock, 60-inch maple or 60-foot maple. This is all existing landscaping?
There's also a big, there's a large flower garden in the back part that, where one of their entrances will open up. That's already landscaped.
I see that yard garden.
Yes, yard garden. I have gardens all over. Everywhere they look or you come by, it's fully landscaped.
I guess the 60-foot maple would be existing as well.
70-foot on the other side.
Oh, a big one over in the front, yeah. Okay.
So, Mark, would this line be ambiguous then? This line on the, on the north? That looks like it blocks a driveway, whatever that is. This driveway shows it right along the property line. Is this more accurate?
That's just, that's just the plan, the right-of, the plan of the right-of-way that was given.
Oh, so that was the driveway in 1978?
Yeah.
But now it's on the other side of the house?
No, it's on the other side of David Short's building.
The building.
The warehouse. The warehouse.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
The old tobacco warehouse.
See, Mark handed me this. It shows the driveway in 1978.
Okay.
It was between the buildings, but now I guess it goes behind it, for what it's worth.
Okay, so there is a driveway. It's not being used.
It's grassed over.
The location that it's shown on the plan, but you're using the paved area rather than that. Okay.
Can you see that?
Yep.
A second.
That's show, and it's along, it's here in that grass area is where it's called out on the plan, but they're going around the north side.
You should know, Bob, you signed this in 1978.
Yeah, I remember.
How long have you been here, Bob?
I distinctly remember the plan.
I did.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, how about the board? Nothing?
No.
Well, I'd make a motion we close the public hearing.
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 I would also make a motion that we grant the special permit as, as applied for, as it was applied for, without any conditions. I think they've met all the requirements.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you got, the special permit is granted. However, there's a 20-day appeal period from the day that the notice of decision is filed with the town clerk, and after that 20 days expires, you'll get a document from the town clerk. I think it's called a notice of no appeal. You file that at the registry of deeds and take a copy to the building inspector, and he'll, you should issue your building permit. Yes, yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
You guys stamped this and signed it, right?
No, we didn't have to. No, special permit.
Do you need extra plans?
Uh, no. Matter of fact, we don't need all these, do we?
How many do we have here?
We have four, but we just need a couple for the file.
We should have two more.
You think we need four?
We need town clerk, building inspector.
No, we don't, we don't give them this.
We don't have to?
No.
All right, okay, we're good.
We just put one in our file, that's all.
All right. Okay, they don't need them, the rest?
No, we don't need them all. You can...
Fire away.
Fire? Kinling? See, this stuff says right-of-way over existing driveway, existing driveway.
Yeah, and apparently they closed it off, so I don't know if there's another document.
Right. It says, right, if it refers to the plan, if the right-of-way refers to the plan, the plan says over existing driveway. But hey, it's probably a prescriptive easement now because they've been doing it for so long.
Right, right. Boy, must be something important going on here.
Like that? Next on the agenda. You're going to start your fire next week, aren't you? You're going to start your fire next week.
I guess we could take one of the A and Rs now. We've got 10 minutes.
All right. Let's, Mr. Sowalski.
Next thing must be going to fire it up, huh?
No, this is, this would be Sage Road. This is all the Sage Road. But that's next on the agenda anyway. What were we going to do? Skip over Stiles for now?
Well, it's not till 7 o'clock.
Oh, I see.
Is there someone here with this plan?
This isn't, this isn't Rich's.
Emily Vol?
This is Rich's.
Oh, Emily.
Hi. I'm the surveyor.
Hi, Bob Bartlett. Nice to meet you.
Jack Lapamato is praying for the client in case he has questions. I can explain the plan.
Tells what it is.
Basically, there was, there's two surveys, three surveys, one unrecorded, which are in disagreement, and what we're doing is the current property line, as my survey shows it, is down here. A Rose survey showed the property line along here, and what we're doing is Jessica is going to be conveying these two strips of land to the southerly abutter to clear up the discrepancy.
So parcel 1B?
1B and 2B, which is this little triangle here.
Being conveyed to Rogaleski?
Rogaleski. It's just clearing up the discrepancy.
Hi.
That's exactly right. That was 30 years ago. It's exactly right. Oh, I know exactly about it. Up here, up here at this end, there was like a picnic woods with all the surveyors up there. Rose and Huntley, Rose and Huntley and...
Well, Doc Eaton did a major, when I did my survey, I had his worksheet. He had done all of those law files.
He had done most of them.
Yeah, and...
In his moccasins, you know.
Right, and I, I agreed with Doc.
Well, that's good. Doc's dead, he can't argue.
Right.
No, that, that is true. That definitely was a mix-up. It was a mess from, and it was over nothing, you know, the whole, the whole deal was really not making sense.
Just to further explain what Jessica's trying to sell, when there's a deal in place, there's a buyer.
Okay, so that's to clear up the, clear up the parcel so that she can sell it. Okay. Okay, well, I'd make a motion we approve the, the plan of land in Hatfield, Massachusetts prepared for Jessica Hunt under the A and R.
I second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Will? We've got a couple of minutes. We'll sign it.
That's like 1,400 feet back there.
800, 200, 400?
Yeah.
130?
Yeah. All the way back to 1,400.
I guess we can sign the rest with a regular pen. Do you have a regular pen? We don't need to use the...
Yeah.
The other copies that we have. We have all the, this is all we have?
Yeah, where are the other copies?
Yeah, we passed them out.
Sure, sure are. Do you have a disc as well for the assessor?
Um, I can submit if that's what they want.
I don't know if they want, I don't know. They'll do it, take a PDF or generally a disc is what's submitted. Right.
Okay.
And a check also.
The check is already...
Check is in the mail? Okay.
No, the check is already been heard.
Thank you. Get the pen?
The pen. Signature hasn't changed in 30 years, 40 years.
Arthritis in my hands has gotten to it a little bit.
The T is exactly the same.
Oh, here I am. I didn't mind.
The R has changed still a little bit. Fancy with a R.
Oh, he has a big one.
Oh, I do two different kinds of R.
You saying it's for me?
I'll build my older R.
Is it, is it just for this?
It's something else.
Right. So...
Yeah.
Statewide position or just Connecticut Valley?
Trying to revitalize Connecticut Valley.
Get the microphone right. How are you? I got a red box.
Bob and Tom Wilson will always show up.
My summer, which is fun.
Don Summers sometimes.
Maybe not.
Not by your husband.
Maybe we may.
I guess right there. I should, the border, I'm just going to talk merger, all but sure. Ernie's final, not treasury.
You had a statewide position.
Yeah, I was, I was...
Secretary?
Secretary, treasurer.
And that's, that's God?
And I'm still on board at Ernie's.
Oh, good.
I'm trustee at Tech, I think.
Did you see that?
Is there a meeting scheduled already for this year?
That plan?
Um...
The annual meeting?
To straighten out that mess up in the far corner.
Yeah, well, actually, we had the convention with Mark.
Comes down by Barrett Rogaleski.
Okay.
That's straightening out that, straightening out that line.
Your pen, Walmart?
So...
So it's done?
Yeah, yeah.
Full stage road, county road, the town road. Huh? How do you, I'm all the way over, all the way over to Burg. It's got to be in blue? Blue?
That's what we're doing. Blue's the color of the day.
Oh, man. Good thing I didn't sign it black.
Yeah, I'm sure it's been, yeah. 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 Yeah.
I'd say it's 7 o'clock. Public hearing will be held by the Hatfield Planning Board in Memorial Town Hall, 59 Main Street, Hatfield, Massachusetts, on June 1, 2016 at 7:00 PM on an application filed by Adele Stiles and Manuel Enriquez of 18 Scotland Road, Hatfield, Massachusetts. Assessor's map, 226 Lot 106, currently zoned rural residential for the purpose of converting the single-family to a legal two-family house at 18 Scotland Road, Hatfield, Massachusetts in accordance with Section 3.0 Use Regulations, Subsection 1.14, conversion of existing single-family to two-family use not in a mixed-use development set forth by the zoning bylaws. And again, the, the way we'll conduct the hearing, the applicant will make their presentation. We'll open the floor to any questions or comments, address them to the board. We will give the applicant a, a chance for rebuttal or answering and clarifying any questions. We may or may not close the public hearing, and we may or may not vote on it tonight. Adele Stiles, you're on deck or up?
We obviously live in, at Eighteen Scotland, and we've been meeting over the years.
Do you have plans for us?
I do, yes. I don't have confidence, I hope they'd be too big for the table. So we, we, over the years, have been chatting with you guys, and, and we finally did in December purchase, um, Eighteen Scotland, um, and there is the detached garage that we have been talking about to convert, um, the upstairs level into a, same thing as the last, last lady, um, to an in-law suite, but since we don't have those here in town, um, we need to go ahead with doing, uh, converting a two, a single-family to a two-family, and our, our main purposes of doing this was, again, for generational living, my parents are aging, Manny's parents are aging, we've had some different scenarios within the family, and so we thought this structure seemed like a, a, a nice family, um, situation, um, and there's been lots of different thoughts about that, but, um, our, our goals are to keep it a, a very nice neighborhood feel, um, with, with the family. So I can explain, um, yes, a little bit more. You might have seen some of the plans, but if you're looking for the apartment, that's right back here, too.
Remarkable service site plan. Okay, didn't start yet.
Okay, so, um, the goal is to have a very small, uh, you know, convert the bed to a, a master bedroom with a small office or den over here, having number two, living room, kitchen and dining room, a bath and a half with washer and dryer, um, having an egress, this here is the driveway, so having the egress going up here, and then a second egress off the existing deck that is already there, off the back of the, the setup. We really are not going to be changing much to the grounds at all, everything is already there, the only difference that we know we have to do is attach the main house to the detached garage, and so that is in, um, I believe in the front page of these, if you want, or right here, um, there's, we're, we're trying to keep it in line with what the rest of the house looks, so it looks like it was one structure, so with a porch or, um, something of, of that nature, but a sturdy roofline is what you've, you said we have to certainly, um, do to connect it, to make it a, a two-family. So the parking would be on here. So this is the, um, parking, this is the main house here, with our three parking spots for the main house, and then with the detached garage, there's plenty of space, there's a huge driveway here, but the three that are necessary.
Why aren't the driveways shown on there?
I don't know, that's what the, the surveyors gave me. Not quite sure, maybe these are all the same, so there are multiple ones for you. So the, since they're, they also didn't draw the attachment in here because it isn't set yet, this is just the surveyors, when we have the property survey, but.
Proposed, proposed attachment. So there's a driveway to Sunset Avenue.
And then there's the driveway here.
Are the garage doors there as well?
There is one garage door that goes from front to back, um, or, you know, pull-through. Uh, we will be using the downstairs mostly, primarily for the, our personal use, um, so the, the parking would be outside or.
What do we use the downstairs for your personal?
Um, Manny and myself, so, I guess it doesn't.
It's a garage?
It's a garage.
Yeah, but what if, what if your car's in the garage and these three spaces are filled?
It's not to be a garage.
I'm sorry.
The, the plan is to.
It's just the upstairs part, but downstairs is a garage, still part of it, so that's why I'm saying we're still using the garage downstairs, this is only a second-story, um, dwelling.
So, my question is, if you have vehicles in the downstairs garage, and spaces number four, five, and six have cars there, how do you get your car out that's in the garage?
Our three cars, we have a three-car garage attached to the house.
You just said you were gonna use the garage.
I, I'm sorry, I guess I was just trying to indicate that the downstairs is still a garage and the apartment is upstairs, so I didn't want you to think it was a two-level living, so that's why I meant that.
Oh, I know that from the plan, I can see that from the plan, that it's not a.
So how, I mean, right now, we house our boat in it and just, um, lawn equipment, the, the garage is very wide that you're able to maneuver around, you could fit probably, you're asking how you can get out, but, um, certainly you could exit from.
We don't plan on having that many vehicles to where it would be a issue.
Well, that was a question, but.
Did we clarify that for you, Will?
Your, well, three parking spots are blocking the garage. That's, that's the ca, that's the fact.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that satisfy the parking requirements if it's outside?
Well, you said if somebody is inside, how do they get outside? If, if there's, the spaces four, five, and six are occupied, and, and you have a vehicle parked in the garage, how do you get it out, you gotta knock on their door and ask them to move their car?
The other driveway? Cause it's, you could drive through the garage.
Absolutely, you could go through there, it is a pull-through, um, again, we're using it for a boat, and I, I'll call my mom and say, can I move your car?
You're not supposed to have to do that, but. Still looking for the driveway plan, there it is.
How many parking spaces you gonna have?
Three for each, right?
Three per, three per dwelling in it.
Plus one for a guest, right?
Well, two plus one, two plus one, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Two for the residences and one for a guest.
Two parking spaces for each one, plus a common parking for guests, okay.
Okay, anybody from the floor have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address for the record, please.
Barbara Pope, Eleventh and Gotham Road, I live across the street from the applicants. And first off, I just wanna say, everyone really likes your lot, this is nothing personal, but, um, so there's quite a few serious considerations in opposition to the application. The first is, my husband, Tom, and I last year weren't able to get a sewer connection, and we were told by Walt there, who, the town told us to contact Walt there, um, so Walt went to the town, came back to us and said, we weren't allowed to have sewer because it was already overused on Elm Street, I know there's issues of grade two, but I'm just talking about the, what we were told. So last year, cause our subject is about twenty years old, we wanted to connect and we weren't allowed to, so it would be unfair to us and, and to other people in our neighborhood that would like to connect into the sewer system, they can't, when the town wouldn't possibly allow another whole residence with sixteen hundred square feet to have and impact the sewer system. The other, in addition to being unfair, it's also an overtaxed sewer system, and I'm not sure that the town is going, is able to take more sewage than the pipes on Elm Street. Secondly, um, to us, it doesn't really matter, and it's great that they won't have their family there, our concern is long-term, we're gonna be here for the long haul, so if they sell the house and they leave, and it's a two-family residence, we could have four students from UMass in there with four vehicles or seven vehicles or whatever, we need to think about the long-term, so, um, we're concerned about the impact that that will have on our neighborhood, our peace and quiet. Tom and I, for example, we live directly across the street, so we can see to the left the main house at Eighteen Scotland, we can see out of our front window the, the neighbors, the hosters to the right, and smack dab in the middle of it would be a third house, like squeezed in there, and that's not at all what the zoning laws anticipate or, or what the purpose is, we're supposed to have space, it's supposed to be one residence per acre, and this would completely contradict the, um, the purpose of the zoning bylaws to swish in another residence, and, and we just moved from Greenfield, and we doubled our mortgage, we doubled our property taxes, we doubled the term of our mortgage, and to get away from the Greenfield thing where it was jammed in, and we would be investing all this to, to be faced with a situation that was not unlike what we, unfortunately, were trying to leave in Greenfield, so that seems a little unfair, and, and the zoning laws are really like a contract between the people that buy into these neighborhoods and the town, we buy these properties thinking it's gonna be one residence per acre, it shouldn't, the rules shouldn't change because somebody else who had notice of these laws wants to change, and even though it's for family reason for now, it's gonna be an investment property at some point in the future, and that's not what we bargained for, when we made this major investment financially for our family. Impact on property values is the next thing, and I've got some documents that show that basically property values stay the same when you've got single-family homes that stay the same and there's conformity, this would obviously impact the conformity and we'd have a two-family in there and potentially likely at some point in the future an investment property, that would definitely be detrimental to our property values, considering we're paying a lot of taxes, that wouldn't be a great investment for us as, as families. Let's see here, the application was incomplete when it was filed, okay, this application was filed on April twenty-seventh, um, the hearing is what, a month and a half later, the notice that we received, and I've got a copy of it, says, "The complete application is available at the town hall for inspection." Tom and I have gone to the town hall several times, we've called the building inspector, we've made, a lot of us have made phone calls, and, and last two, last Monday, the twenty-third, we came back again, and he said, "The application isn't here yet." So when you look at the rules for what an application's supposed to contain, it's got a long list of things, it's supposed to have sewage, sewer information, it's supposed to have setback requirements, it's supposed to have a spotment, a long, long list, and many of those are relevant, and the rules also say that the planning board in writing can waive some of those requirements, but I talked to the town clerk, and she said there had been no waiver in writing, so this application was incomplete when it was filed, it was incomplete as late as last week, we have no complete notice about what this application's about, and it's really unfair to even have this hearing, let alone consider an application or allow it, when we still haven't had proper legal notice, so it's got a, it's a fatal defect right by, right by itself. The last thing that I'd just love to say is that Hatfield zoning bylaws don't have any provision about connector walkways or attached or detached, it's simply not anywhere in the definition, we don't even have a definition for a two-family, so how in the world do we get from not even a breezeway with walls on each side to a connector walkway which is no more than a cement walkway with a roof and a rail? It's not in the laws, nothing in that justifies it, you can change the zoning laws, but you can't just say, oh, we can have a walkway in here with rails, and that's gonna make a one-family, massive forty-six hundred square foot house, all of a sudden it's a sixty-two hundred square foot house, how does that happen? Common sense dictates you walk by there for ten years, within two separate structures, with separate walls, with separate roofs, with separate doors, separate entrances, separate garages, and all of a sudden, a little simple walkway is gonna make it one structure? That's, that doesn't, that's not in the laws, and it, it kinda defies common sense. All I got.
Thank you.
Have we received any notice from the Department of Public Works that there's inadequate sewer in the area? We notify other boards and departments in town, and they respond. And the Department of Public Works did not indicate anything, they, they indicated that they received it on, all they can read is four, it looks like four twenty-seven sixteen, and they didn't indicate anything about sewer. Are you getting a sewer connection?
Yes, um, we had the Department of Public Works come out, and it was, our understanding that it is already stubbed out to the street, so they said that because that was already pre-planned by the previous owner, and there is already in the garage the set for the pump out to it, um, that that was already pre-planned in the past, so it would be approved because it was there, they did say if that was not already pre-stubbed out, then they would not be able to do it, but I guess they took that into consideration, um, when.
Now you're on a subject system.
No, we, we currently, we are the last house, is my understanding, to be on town, um, the town system, so this, this, the apartment would be able to be stubbed into that main public sewer line as well.
So there'd be two sewer services?
Yes.
And where's it stubbed, to Scotland Road or from?
Scotland Road.
John Zaminsky, Ten Woodridge Circle, I built number twelve, I owned both lots at one time, but I built number twelve just before, uh, eighteen was built, and the, there's a, I don't know if it's a manhole or a stub, right at the edge of the property, um, at twelve.
And where is twelve?
Twelve is the next lot up.
The next lot? East, west?
Yeah, okay, I believe, I don't know if there's a manhole here or if it's just a stub, but the sewer, the sewer line doesn't belong to the town, actually, that, that does from here, okay, but it, it runs on, um, number twelve's property, I gave, I gave, I sold Mitch the lot, and, um, it runs across here, I gave him an easement, and then he tied into it, and then this house has a separate tie into it, uh, here, he's on pump, this has, this is gravity, there was a pitch, so from here to here, actually, um, I don't believe it's, it's privately, uh, it's, it's, it's a pump line, basically, I believe it's a two-inch line.
With an easement across the Rogaleski lot?
Yeah, there's an easement right across here.
See, John, do you know about that?
Well, they mentioned easement, and I, John Rogaleski's my wife, my daughter Karen and Gary have that number twelve. Yeah, my understanding for that manhole that John was explaining is, is the pitch in the road and the pitch of the sewer line, that was the last one that could hook up by gravity feet, so Karen and Gary's is on gravity, and I wasn't aware, I was aware there was an ejector pump, but I guess it's, I wasn't aware of an easement that goes across the air.
It goes across the property, it should be in the deed.
Yeah, that's what I mentioned to him, that it's in the deed, so if, I don't know, is that considered a private sewer line?
No. If it's across private property and it's, uh, through an easement, and it's not in the.
Must have been something approved when, um, number eighteen was built.
John, did you put that, that sewer in there? Did you put it in, or did Mitch put it in, or how did it get in there?
Oh, Mitch put it in.
Mitch put it? Of course.
I believe, I believe Mitch put it in, I don't think I stuffed it out.
Oh, that should be shown on the plan. It's like.
There is, there is an easement, I know there's an easement.
But as far as our.
Across the Rogaleski parcel. Well, it's, oh, well, it says Karen Rogaleski in, okay.
Hosley, Hosley Property.
Okay, I'm, I apologize, across the Hosley property. Well, cause it says it on the plan.
On the plan says, it's your name.
Anyways, my brother, you know, who worked on the water department and stuff in town here for thirty years, he said that the pitch in the roadway, the pitch of the sewer line got to be too high, too close to the existing ground, so they couldn't extend it further down Scotland Road, cause the pitch has to go up, Scotland Road goes down, so that's why that manhole, which I guess, John, did you say that was a private manhole there?
There's a manhole up there. Okay, that was there.
I believe that's the end of the town.
Apparently you put a manhole at the end of the line, so if the town needed to snake it out.
Yeah, so their house is hooked up to that manhole by gravity, and that's the last, and that's the last. Last house that supposedly could be hooked up to the town sewer line at that point.
So, so any house past eighteen would.
So any house past 18 will probably never get a sewer system?
No, unless a, unless a pump would be put in.
Put a pumping station down there?
Yeah, they could, I guess, and pump it up into this manhole. A minimal pump station.
Well, I guess that would be an issue too if that, if the house was designed to handle, that ejector pump was designed to handle the bedrooms and bathrooms in the house. How does that impact the capacity of the existing ejector pump? Well, yeah, well, she was saying there would be a separate service.
He has put in the ground already a separate service, so it would be on two different pumps.
But it would go into the existing line.
Correct.
I'm not sure what that is. I don't know.
I don't know if you can do that, because if one gets plugged and it's pumping into the other one, it could back up into the house, one house or the other.
Yeah, I don't know if there's two pipes there or one pipe, I have no idea.
Mr. Bartlett, any question? Gary Sebar, Woodbridge Circle. So if I'm to understand this, just going forward, when I built my house, of course we couldn't put a long-line apartment on, so we built a separate wing on the house, which is still part of the house. So if I wanted to do this, all I have to do is build a garage and connect it to my existing building.
Well, you have to come in for a special permit as well. Get some two-by-fours and pour in some concrete.
But it could be done once it crosses the seven somehow.
We'll look at each individual case.
Bob, Bob, somebody's got a question.
Yes, sir.
Richard Garrett, 9 Scotland Road. Lived in the neighborhood for probably 20 something years, maybe more, 23 years. Seen a lot of things change, a lot of things for the good, a lot for not as good. I won't go into that. But I think, I just want to say, I think these folks are probably terrific people too, but I'm against this. Barbara did a lot of great work, I'm not as prepared as her, but I think a lot of us feel the way she feels. I think they should get their sewer before anybody else does, first of all, if there's going to be one going in. Second of all, she was saying that she isn't sure about what a two-family home is. I Googled it and I know what it is. It's not two separate households with a tunnel attached. You could call it that, but to me, that's a house and a house with a tunnel attached. Two-family homes are single structures with a dividing wall between the two residences. And I'm just, I just don't want to see that thing get built in again 10 years from now. I mean, we're here forever, if you know what I'm saying. And I don't want to see that turn into an apartment or anything even resembling that. And I think it's, I think already there's too much house, too many houses on one little piece of property. I don't know how that happened, but there they are. So I would say no. I might think of more things to say later if you're still all here, but that's one thing I wanted to put in.
Jason Niles, I live at 21 Scotland Road. I just want to say one problem with, I think, the background of this process, because everyone wants to be friends with our neighbors, is that the general way you go about this is you put your sale contingent upon permitting. So you can do all your due diligence, you do your research, you get your permits, you kind of find out what your neighborhood thinks and make sure everything fits. And then your sale becomes contingent. I mean, as a town, we would never allow a developer or builder to come in and buy land with an idea in their head and then come to a meeting like this and say, "Well, I already bought it, can I do it?" So I kind of want to put that out there as just why we shouldn't really consider any hardships with this, because if the correct process was placed, that this would all have been discovered before the final sale was gone through. Another couple of things I just want to put out is it's really irrelevant who's going to live there, because there's nothing, you can write in your laws that says only grandma can live there, only a mother can live there. Once it's done, you've got 1,400, 1,500 square feet, bay garages, you can have six college kids living there. So the way everyone in the neighborhood has to look at this is, we don't know and has nothing to do with who could live there. Now, my gut says that up all those flights of stairs above a garage is probably not going to be an elderly couple for too long. My gut, my gut says you could live next to the six UMass kids. Nothing wrong with being UMass kids, I was once one, but I don't want to buy a house next to one. The sewer thing, what I want to point out about the sewer thing is I too in 2008 tried to investigate sewer and was told kind of the same thing, that I couldn't have it on Scotland. It made sense to me, I never really pursued it. But if this is all coming up to a head, I think we should all be able to get sewer on Scotland prior to another apartment that's there. Three, what I want to point out is the structure itself. I think there needs to be some thorough investigation into that structure itself. There needs to be, what's the, we're looking for some type of certified plot plan. And it's possible that that structure in and of itself is actually not within permits. One thing that we noticed is that, you know, you've got a driveway going through the lot going from Scotland to Sunset, which means both sides of the front and setbacks have to be 35 feet. I mean, we'd like to see a site plan, because none of us are going to enter the property and start measuring it, but Google Maps is suggesting that that structure in and of itself may not actually be legal as it is. And then to turn that structure around and turn it into an apartment when really it was probably built as in a garage, and I'm sure, you know, I don't know how it came about, I know some neighbors did go down to try to find documentation on this, and I don't believe anybody had any documentation about this structure as it is. And now it's possibly going to be reused into something completely different. The final thing I think, and this is just without a doubt, this affects our property values. This, all of us bought houses here in a single-family neighborhood, that was when we rely on the zoning laws, because that's our contract with the town. The type of structure we're looking at and the scenarios that we could have, like I said, can be used by anyone. You get six college kids renting there, there is no doubt our property values are going to go down. We can get every real estate agent in the book to come here and testify that it's likely going to happen. Rubber hits the road, you walk in, someone walks in to look at one of our houses for sale, they see eight, nine cars next door, you see living structures coming up out of a garage, you see kids, and it's nothing that we bought into. So I see no issue where we're probably, where there's any good in our value in this and our value will take a hit. So that's it.
Well, let me answer that. We don't grant special permits based on hardship. That's not even an issue. We don't even hear that. We can condition the special permit, we can have it expire. We can have it say it's only family that lives there, you know, immediate family kind of, so we can put conditions in the special permit to not allow college students or something like that. As far as the setbacks, I, this doesn't tell us anything. And I don't know why the surveyor didn't put any dimensions on this and show the driveways.
Or the utilities.
Didn't get what you paid for.
Utilities.
As well as utilities. The sewer is another question that we need answered from the sewer department slash Department of Public Works. I don't know what the status is there and I don't know that they're going to grant you another connection when they told other folks they couldn't connect because it was overloaded.
When they did come out, they looked at it, we can do this.
We need a document saying that, I guess. Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Dunphy, 10 Sunset Avenue. I live directly behind them. So they have three dogs. We've taken all the bushes down by the pool, we've taken a lot of trees on the other side. Friday night, 12:15, dogs are out. My kitchen window's open, I go into my kitchen to open my cabinet, their dogs are barking at me in my own house. I can't move in my own house without their dogs barking at me. They're so close, if they add more people there, more family members there, I don't want to be sequestered in my own home that I purchased, that I work hard for. My taxes have gone up $8,000 this year, it's going to work more, I know what I'm talking about. I think it's just, no, it's going to become a playground over there. And I don't want to be hiding in my backyard all the time because I can't move in my own home.
Well, if the dogs are by there, we don't have jurisdiction over dogs.
I understand that, what I'm saying is close proximity.
That's the police department or the dog officer. That's who you call.
I don't want to do that, but the point is, we're very close, I am right on top of them. So anything that happens over there affects me and my neighbors, the Zima, Amy, because we are, our houses are very close to the road, their property goes right to the edge of the road. And we hear everything. That's just my point and I don't think that a two-family should be there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Behind, I'm sorry.
Jim Greco from Woodbridge Circle. And I'm sure that they're thinking of the family, but I also think that in the long term it could be anything goes with a two-family house and that worries us. It does devalue our properties if we start having two-family homes in the area. And I just didn't want to see us set a precedent with the two-family home special permit. And I agree with the other neighbors also.
Lee Callen, 23 Scotland Road. I agree as well, not in favor of this happening. Minor provision too has to do with pedestrian safety and congestion, traffic congestion. You say, "Well, do you get much?" We actually get a fair amount, because a lot of people go down to the field. This is just going to add more cars. We have half a dozen to a dozen kids at the bus stop twice a day. And I tell you, it's, we've had to jump out of the way sometimes, the thought of adding another four, five cars or whatever it may be, with more coming and going is also another reason I'd be against it besides those that have already been mentioned.
Sylvia Callen, 23 Scotland Road. Yeah, that road is initially a farm road, so it's not really a, you know, typical size road. And there is a daycare facility right at the corner. Yeah, Mendix. And so they have children being dropped off as well early in the morning. So there's also those kids out in the morning and also Karen has two young children right next door to the property. I mean, I would object just for safety reasons and also 10 Sunset Road would now, would also have a lot of children, would have traffic going on their lot, on their road. I also think that at the end of the day, this is an investment property, we own an investment property and that is what should be looked at and not an in-law apartment. They're probably going to be paying them rent. So I object to that, simply because of the property values going down. And a lot of us have seen our property taxes go, since we moved there, we can now pay like three or four times more. And, you know, it could be an issue for us as residents to want to stay in the neighborhood and, you know, fund that. I mean, that's just one of those things where it could devalue those property values over the long term.
Any else?
Amy Gilrain, 8 Sunset Avenue. And I think people have brought up a lot of valid points here. I live right next door to Debbie and she and I are in closest proximity to the structure and we share a lot of similar concerns to other people that, you know, what's going to happen with this property in the future, because we are so close to it. I think if anyone were willingly and knowingly going to go and build a house for themselves, you would never place it in that area of the lot, where you're so close to the road and so close to the other buildings and other structures. From my living room, I'm probably, from me to you, to that structure, we're really right on top of it. And we're just concerned about the future and who ultimately may be in there in the future. So I would also be against it.
Tom Morse, 11 Scotland Road. I'd just like to affirm the points that my life Barbara Pope had made earlier. And additionally, you know, I think, you know, talking about the sewer, I was the one who had Walter there out last year at the house. And the focus at that point after Walter, you know, went to the town and come back to me was on the, you know, the amount of fluid going into the Elm Street situation. But I also would just want to point out, in the event that is not the case, our house actually is not beyond 18 Scotland, it's actually within, it's slightly north of that area. So I just, you know, we want to emphasize that as well as the other points that remain in doubt.
Is it across from the Hosley house at 12?
It's in between 12 and 18. Across the street.
If you could have hooked up, would you have had the pump?
Pardon?
If you could have hooked up, would you have had the pump?
There was no mention of what we would have to have done.
Oh, you never got that far?
We never did. And I, you know, for those reasons that had been mentioned before, as well as, you know, traffic considerations, I would be against this special permit in any form. Thank you.
Just have a question for John Zaminsky here. You were denied access to the sewer?
We were, yes.
So you can tie into the sewer with a pump, but if they were denied access and, you know, you put a lot of structure on it, just because a one-family is going into a two-family. And that the nature of the neighborhood is one-story, not one, sorry, one-family houses. You know, I mean, they're all one-family houses. Basically.
Sylvia Callen, 23 Scotland Road. There is nothing to say that that house is massive, to have somebody just live with you in that house. So I'm, you know, we all have really big houses and we have plenty of rooms and plenty of bathrooms. I think it's got like six bathrooms or...
Nine.
A room over the garage. Nine bathrooms, a room over the garage.
That's what I heard, I heard eight.
They don't have children, I mean, there's three people in that house. I have to believe that they need the income.
Even the bathrooms have a bathroom. If you consider that, just moving your folks in with you and closing the door between...
We wanted a little more separation than that.
I mean, that's what Gary did. Gary built an in-law suite for his mother because he was denied an in-law apartment. I would do that with my family. We've got, we've got kids, but we have an extra bedroom. I have my mother stay with us in the summer. I just, I don't know, it doesn't make sense to me.
We did it for years, it was like...
Can I make a motion? We close the public hearing? Seems like everybody's gotten to talk.
Yep. Second?
I wanted to say that caring 12 Scotland Road, I think our neighbors have brought up a lot of valid points and I would like to see concrete answers before a decision be made on something like this. Again, I think they're right people and it will be family now, but I am worried about the future and who will be in there in the long run as well as the sewer issue as it does a lot through. So I'd like to see a little more answers before something like this.
Well, if, you know, if we close the public hearing, then we can discuss it amongst ourselves. It's closed to the floor unless we ask a question. If the board has a question of someone, then you can answer that. And what are your thoughts? I think we would need more information unless you're thinking to deny, yeah.
Can I just?
I think, you know...
One more, okay.
Janice Garrett, 9 Scotland Road. And my husband and I were actually the first family to actually live on Scotland Road. And I can tell you that there was a history of families that wanted to do this in the past and they would come around in the neighborhood and they would talk to us. And we would say, "What do you, what do you want to do?" And they want a family there and we'd ask, "What are you going to do when your family's no longer with you?" Well, we're going to that, of course. You know, and that's a big concern for us. My father lived with us. We added a room on and a bathroom and he lived in, he shared our kitchen and he lived with us. And, you know, a lot of people have done that. And I just think what everybody said is, I agree with them. I understand why they wanted to do it, they've got this big garage, but we're against it. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to close the hearing. I second it. Is there any discussion on closing the hearing?
No. All in favor?
All in favor of closing the hearing, huh?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed. We'll now discuss it amongst ourselves. It seems to me that this is not, it does not fit in with the existing or future character of the neighborhood. So I would make a motion, we deny the special permit based on it does not... I'm looking for some wording here. It does not fit in with the existing character of the neighborhood, the single-family homes that are up and down the street. There's a question on utilities, whether it will, because one of the considerations we have to take into effect is whether it will overload any public water sewer. Seems to me from the builder that, or the fellow that owned the land before that, that there may be a question on the sewer. So I'd make a motion that we deny the special permit. Is there a second?
I'd like to add a couple of things that we have to, before we vote, we need to think about. Is this going to be fair to all concerned?
Is this going to be fair to all concerned? And it looks like we have a, we don't have a good, a good amount of feedback. We have a good amount of feedback that's not in favor of the project. Doesn't appear that it's going to build goodwill or better friendships. And it doesn't appear that it's going to be beneficial to the community based upon the input by all of, all of the, you know, the residents of that area. That particular neighborhood has basically been a single-family neighborhood since its existence, so...
Yeah, somewhat upscale too. I mean, it's not...
I'm just, you know...
Chatham Shelter Ranches.
And everybody else, everyone that talked in here was...
Funding your taxes.
Every person that talked in here had to accommodate other members of their family within the structures that they had, or had to add to the structure, not put a walkway in there. I mean, Henry Kugler got away with it, but I don't think, you know, you would have to connect, in my opinion, you would have to connect those structures together. Like Lisa did, put her act together, and like everybody else has over the course of time. I'm against it the way it is.
Well, we need to remind, for the residents, you can't have, can't have two separate houses on one lot in a town. Most towns, you can't do that.
It's right in that, isn't it?
Pardon? Yeah. Yeah. So that's the reason for...
It's a tiny house.
Tiny house.
One connecting, connecting two buildings.
Okay, we'll vote on it then? Are we ready?
So second, I second it? I second your motion?
We have a motion.
And seconded. We discussed it. All those in favor of denying the special permit, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. It's denied. You have an appeal. There's a 20-day appeal period that either party, anybody aggrieved by our decision can file an appeal at the courthouse. I'm not sure if it's district court or superior. I think it's district court.
District.
So that's, that's the process. Thank you. Thank you for your input.
How you doing?
Good.
Okay.
I've seen the answers in the morning, but to really speak up is...
We still have a meeting. Could you please talk outdoors? We still have business to conduct here, and we can't do it with a lot of noise going on. Thank you.
She's got a question about appealing?
After, after this. I know. Speaking so much, never were able to say anything back. Some of the things I think are, this neighborhood, most of the houses couldn't even do this because they don't have a smart front. And things like that, you know? So I can understand why they might be nervous about it, that everyone could start doing and set the precedence. But I don't think they're aware of the actual laws that they couldn't do it. So I guess my question is just if we did appeal, would we be able to voice some of those concerns?
Put it in your appeal. You have to talk to your attorney about that. I assume you hired an attorney.
I just don't understand the process to say, would we be able to discuss it a little bit more? That's all. To actually answer some of the questions that these folks had. Is that the process?
It's not here. The appeal is at the courthouse. It's, you don't appeal it to us.
That's one...
You appeal it to a judge, and the judge makes the decision. So I assume, yeah, that's your, anytime you go to the courthouse, you have to write the reason why you're there, and the reason why you're appealing it, and why you feel that you're aggrieved by our decision. And you have to put that in writing so that someone can read it and make it, and a judge can make a decision based on your input. And you'll probably look at our minutes and things like that. That becomes part of the legal process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Berkman. We've met before. Thanks for your good work. I'm working with Gary Chilwell because I live at 8 Gore Avenue.
Mr. Zachary.
Mark, I'm sorry. I knew where Gary Chilwell is. I live at 8 Gore. It's the old Dyer place. Moved in...
Still what?
Dyer place at 8 Gore. And it's a multi, it's a multi-generational family. It's myself, my daughter, and my 12-year-old grand twins. And the house is just not quite big enough. So under your 3.01.14...
That's what these people were looking for, huh? I bet that made you feel good, huh?
I said, oh God, I'll come back another night. Essentially, what I would like to do is add 1,000 square feet to the rear of the house. This is the garage. Attach it to the rear of the garage. And there's a big deck here that will get me back into the house. And that's where I park my car, so we're going to put a little doorway in here. From the street, the only, this is only about eight feet wide here. And that would just be the public entrance back. And this is the, this, these photos were not done for you, they were just what I had. But that's the walkway, it would be right there. This is the back of the house, and you can see, you know, the swimming pool. And, and so in that big space where the, you see the pool, and you can see the fence?
Sure.
The rail fence?
Yep.
It would kind of be in there. My neighbor here is David Lysick or Patty Lysick?
Lysick.
Lysick. And I've already, and we're neighbors. I've already had a conference with them. And they're pretty comfortable with it. And this angle happens to be their garage. I think you can see it here. So this volume would not really intrude on any of their living space. I have the 200 feet of frontage. And I own more than 60,000 square feet of land, which is the minimum requirement for the conversion.
Yep.
And so I would...
How far is this from, is this the property line here?
Yeah, and this is the 15-foot setback.
Okay.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, yeah. And, oh, what this thousand feet would be is one bedroom, one bath, and a great room that just has a kitchenette on one wall. Because we are a multi-generational family, but they're 12, and I need a little more space. So this is Mark's preliminary plan, and I would like to formalize it with your support and go through the, filling out the application, spending my money.
Well, that's, I mean, you can fill out the application. I mean, you have the right to do that, to file an application.
But your face sheet says a pre-application.
Well, it's nice, yeah, it's, yeah.
Could you please waive having to notify Whately, Northampton, Sunderland?
Well, no, I don't know if we can waive that, but, I mean, we can waive some of the requirements, even these folks brought that up. But you have to ask for specifics on waivers, you know? I mean, we don't tell you, we don't tell you what you can waive. You ask us what you'd like to waive, and then we approve those waivers.
At this level or later?
No, no.
Later. That's the mailing notification. That's okay. So this is a one-level, one-story. And it will essentially be invisible from the street. And, and this is the Lysick's backyard.
Sure, sure.
In terms of, there's a family, her name is Rita. Rita and Joe, I think they're number seven.
Brozowski.
What?
Brozowski.
Okay.
Brozowski.
And they have, they have a two-family.
You're going to live at Haffield, Lisa. Got to get them skis all together.
I know. How many years did it take you?
I was born here.
Okay. You've got...
I was born on a rock here.
And the old Gore, the original Gore house, three houses down, is a two-family. And Rita...
Rita? Really, is it two-family?
Yeah.
Really?
She had her mother living on upstairs addition for many years.
Well, that answers my question.
That doesn't make it a two-family though.
No, I think it was a mother-in-law apartment more than a two-family.
Yeah, if there's not a kitchen, it's not a two-family.
Oh, I don't, I wasn't in it. But you don't have an in-law part of your...
No, we don't have that.
How come? Is it tied? I mean, all these people, it's...
We don't like in-laws, but...
No, but, but an accessory apartment, like, they have it in Williamsburg, they have it in Northampton.
I know that.
And then the requirement is that it's owner-occupied.
Yep.
And that gives the neighbors...
Gives them a lot...
Some juice, you know?
Yeah, they have an advocate.
Yeah, but it's just not in your zoning yet.
Right. Because, and it, because when, when the in-laws are no longer there, it's always become an apartment for rent, like these folks have.
Okay, but if it's owner-occupied, then the neighbors can complain to whatever board.
Right. And we could have done that with them as well.
Have you, I'm sorry, I'm just talking shop now.
We could have conditioned it and say only relatives live there, and once or no...
Or you can say it has to be owner-occupied, because then the owner can rent it out, but at least there's somebody that's responsible.
Yeah, yeah, we're, okay, we're splitting heritage.
I love talking about this stuff.
Two different issues there. Two different...
Splitting heritage. Get back to your problem, or your answer, or whatever you want.
Well, the criteria are in 5.3.7, and, oh, wait a minute, no, it's not. It's over here. And, I mean, we don't need all topography, you know, that's more geared towards a new project of maybe a bigger scale. The number eight here is location description of all proposed septic system, perk tests, water supply, storm drainage. That would also, you're on the sewer out there, yeah, but that would also, a sewer connection as well. I don't think we need drainage calculations, number eight, so... It's nice to see landscaping. There wouldn't be any signs. So maybe you want to go through this list with Mark?
Has he returned?
Yeah, he's here.
And, and give us a list of things you'd like waived. And just reading through here, there were, you know, the topography and the drainage calculations, we don't need those. And soil logs. It's always nice to see the landscaping, to see that there's screening.
Site plan, we can show all the trees and buffers and fences and those type of things.
Number 13 is alterations to any existing or new business. That doesn't apply at all.
More detailed plans and more detailed elevations, I presume, is something that's...
I guess 3.5.3.4, number five, the topography, we could waive that. Number nine, the drainage. If you're all in agreement, if you're not, speak up.
Yeah, I don't think we need that. I think the important is that...
Signs, number 12, there wouldn't, there shouldn't be any signs, other than the house number sign in the mailbox. And then number 13 is not applicable whatsoever. And number 15, there's not a lot of stock, of clearing stockpile and removal of topsoil at the site. I assume that little area, you'll just recycle it, so number 15.
Go ahead, name and address.
So we will put it in writing to you...
Okay.
That we're waiving 5, 9, 12, 13, and 15. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Those, a lot of those are not applicable. And we have your address, 8 Gore. So we'll get something out to you, and then you can submit the application for special permit, and then we'll consider it.
We have to have a, we all have to advertise it, what, twice?
Yeah, there's a public notice period where it advertised twice in two weeks.
You got enough parking there, Mark?
Yes.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you on this preliminary one. We're adding a space, and the driveway is pretty wide here, so the question is, would we allow a car to park on the existing driveway, which is 25 feet? And it would allow car, I think both cars from the garage to pass it. So that was, I kind of showed that diagram there of a car, that sixth car parked there, and showing the width of the driveway and just kind of backing right.
So you're going to add a space in a turnaround?
Yep.
Right?
And so we'll have two in the garage, three outside.
Add a space in turnaround, and you're going to put one on the side?
Yeah.
I guess that works.
Didn't we do that to somebody else I know?
It is, it is a one-bedroom unit, so...
Well, I had a pull-off. This is a, I carved out a space.
Yeah, I think that works. There's room for this guy to back out and go, and this guy, and somebody can back out and go around and be careful there, that's all.
How many cars do you have now?
Well, those 12-year-olds are going to be driving soon.
You can have one car.
That means they have to afford their car.
They could split it. That means they got to get a Prius and park it in David Lysick's lot.
Okay, we all set? Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, I'm going to recuse myself. I don't have to vote on the meeting minutes, because I wasn't at the last meeting, so I'm going to say goodnight.
Okay.
All right, if we got to do something with Richard that you need to be here?
No, he's going to reclaim, he had something to do with the survey.
Yeah.
He did the survey for Richard.
Oh, you, oh, okay, all right.
Okay, goodnight.
Goodnight. Goodnight. Jeannie Mazick.
Jeannie Mazick, 69 Old Stage Road, gentlemen.
Aye.
Ms. Davis. When I was here in April, you had identified three areas that needed to be addressed before approval could be granted on the open space plan. One was approval by the town fire chief that there was adequate space on the private drive for equipment access in order to waive the cul-de-sac requirement. A homeowners association indicating that the road is to be maintained by the HOA and not the responsibility of the town. And then deeding over the town the open space parcel so that there would be no future development. So I believe Fire Chief Gahn sent you a letter saying...
There was some, there was some criteria in that though, Jeannie, also in that letter.
Yep, I have the letter, and he had...
And I don't think that's necessarily bad business.
Have you seen it?
Yes, I've seen it, yeah.
Okay.
Proper lot numbering, keeping the road open and clear of brush, and preventing parked cars from parking the area.
Right, no, I think that's good, that's a good...
So all of these will be incorporated in the HOA so that any future owners of whatever property would be aware of that. The sign that was posted on the end of the private drive at Old Stage actually had been down when, prior to his visit, but that's been replaced. And once the surveyor finishes his work, because we just have the preliminary that I had brought last time, and he was actually there yesterday, and once the lots are actually marked, then... marked, then they'll be numbered as well. As far as, our attorney is working on the homeowners association, he just wanted to make sure that he addressed all of the planning board's concerns in the final draft. And then when the surveyor completes the final survey with everything physically marked, then the 13-acre-plus parcel will be identified, and that will be deeded over to the town. So I guess I need to know what's the next step, the formal application to proceed so that we could move this forward.
Now, this, this letter from, from the fire chief is specific to your parcel?
It is.
Okay, because he said, "I'm reviewing the common driveway concept," and so I wasn't sure if that was, he was reviewing the bylaw.
Well, it was in Jeanie's packet, was that what came in?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it was in the packet that came...
He went to the house, he went to the private drive to make that assessment, that they had done in, in the summer of 2014, when Chief Beldon was fire chief, they had done a fire drill. And he said he had no problem with getting the equipment in and out, and now that it's Fire Chief Gahn that is responsible, he went and took a look at it as well.
I evaluated the common driveway, which includes 65 and 69 Old Stage Road, in agreement with retired Chief Gohn.
Okay.
Yeah, so he did the bright, bright deal on that.
Okay.
But I did concur with the other three or four things that he did say, that they should be open, you know.
Well, I think those are covered in the bylaw.
Yeah, but I think he just kind of brought them forward again where he's starting to see this stuff, you know, where they're letting this stuff overgrow the road and drain it, you know.
May have been other issues.
Because that is, that is your problem, once you go into that homeowners association situation.
And I mean, we've been maintaining it since we've been there anyway, for the past 12 years.
Well, there is, to tell you the truth, this is the first time we've ever done this. There is no application. I guess what you need to do is get all the documents together, and then get on our agenda and come in, and we'll review it, and...
Bob Wagner's the cat that really understands that stuff, right? I mean, he seems to have a pretty good hold on it.
Okay, but there is no application form.
No, there are no, okay.
Okay.
So get all your documents together.
So I guess it'll be conditional, so that if it's approved, then I sign the deed over?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Kind of thing, what's the...
Yeah, you would want all your ducks in a row all signed before you sign over the property to the town, right?
Yeah, yeah, we would approve it contingent upon your, your signing over, yeah, signing off on your part.
Yeah, and your attorney will look over all the documents, make sure everything is copasthetic and...
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll send them?
Yeah, so, again, get your documents and call Wilma, and she'll get you on the, on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you folks have something?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We got, we forgot.
You had to wade through all the other problems.
Yeah, we'll get to him, yeah.
This would serve on a lot of boards. I'm Richard.
Richard.
Slawski.
Yeah, that's who I thought you were.
Yeah, you thought I was.
Well, you're the only one left on the sheet here, right?
Yes, I am.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, we got an A&R for you, don't we?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'll give you folks each one so you can follow along.
Basically, it's a 20, it was a 28, thereabouts acre property, and I had it surveyed by Ron to take off the house.
Okay.
And it conforms all the town requirements, 200 feet of square, 200 feet along the road, 24, it's over an acre.
Yeah.
It's self-contained, and it's marked clearly right now. So what I'm asking the board is to approve removing the house from the rest of the property, because the rest of the property is all agricultural.
Yeah.
And my intent is to put it into APR. And I talked to the people at APR, and they don't like houses on the property.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah, they want, yeah, they want 26 acres.
So this is the first step, pardon?
The 26.395.
Yeah, whatever's left.
That's, that's going into APR.
Yeah, that's my intent, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a piece of property up here that's already in the...
Yeah, right here.
Right here, that's right, that's one.
Ravish or Riggish.
Where's the property, Richard, that's in APR?
Um, north.
Riggish, it's on the other side of the outskirts.
Oh, north of...
Or on a Duval's property.
Yeah, north of Duval.
Yeah, right next to Duval's property, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that is in APR?
Yes.
It's one, it's got to be stepped up one, right?
It's, I think it's parcel 110.
Yeah, I don't know the number.
Yeah.
Yeah, it abuts this piece right here.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, but not Duval.
No, but it abuts Duval.
Because Duval was talking about buying 100 feet off of it.
We already did that.
Right, yeah, we already, yeah, we already did that.
Yeah, I was here for that.
Yeah, we already did that.
Well, there was a little cut out there as well.
Yeah, I know, I was like...
That's what I'm saying, it couldn't have been APR if they cut that out.
Yeah, but he had, he had, I think they had done that before.
Probably, before the APR, just, it's the same thing that Richard's doing here.
That he's doing.
Yeah.
Which we didn't know.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we approve the plan of land in Hatfield, Mass, owned by Margaret A. and Richard K. Slawski, under AP, under...
Approval not required.
Second that motion.
Approval, AP, yeah, approval not required. Did you bring a disc?
No.
Ron should know better.
Yeah, it's, um...
A check.
And a check.
I would have gave a check to the state.
Okay, very good, that's good.
I'd give a check to the state.
Okay, that's all we're checking on, we got to make sure that...
Sure got our money.
Everybody gets their money.
Yeah, you get my money every tax season.
He already got it. Hey, some of those people are talking some really heavy statistics, about $8,000 raised taxes on their property over there? I can't believe that it's 8,000 cents they've been here. Maybe Janet, what's her name, or Jan?
Douglas, because she would have it.
No, maybe Jan, the first one there, but not the, not the new one. We didn't have a, we didn't have a rebuild in...
It's the digital representation of this, of this survey.
Ron should have that for me.
So that the assessors put it into their system, so they put all these parcels together digitally.
Ron would supply that, I assume.
You should have it.
You should have it. He did not give that to me.
Yeah, this is...
I'll give him a call tomorrow, too.
He ran that, too.
Is that why Ron, that's why Ron ran away?
Yeah.
Because he would have to answer.
Yeah, he would have to...
I know, I know Ron. So my first, my first question is, now, once that's put in the assessors, then they'll separate the tax bills from the whole house?
I don't know, I would assume, I would assume they would, yeah.
Takes a while, though.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I already pay the taxes, like, was it me? I think it was me.
Takes a while to get it all separated out.
So this is the first step.
Got to use that one?
I'll choose my pen.
You got to use this pen?
Trying to get a mask that'll put hers on, I think you have to. So you need anything else from me, Mr. Chairman?
No, sir.
Okay.
We're going to give you some of these back, though.
Oh, really?
Unless, would you bring any of your discs?
Oh, yeah, maybe we should hold these for a hostage for your disc.
That's okay, I got one anyways.
Yeah, but it's not signed.
That's true.
Richard, how is Nellie O'Master? Nellie O'Master?
It's good, she was riding the lawnmower the other day.
I saw it there.
She was?
I almost died when I see that.
She's got to be what, 90 plus?
94, I think.
I think I saw her today riding the lawnmower.
Yeah, it's like, Nellie, what are you doing?
Well, it was just hot enough for her to do it.
Just warm enough.
She's a young 94.
Yeah.
I hadn't seen her in quite a while, so I just wondered.
I visit her usually when I come down, if she's, she's home, she still drives.
Still drives?
Yeah. You know, grown tough on that way.
That's right.
Well, probably it's been 92.
How old was her sister, was about 90 something, right?
Yeah, she was about...
95?
Your father was on the Board of Health until he was 90, wasn't he?
Yes, he was.
Yeah. We used to have a lot of fun, go out. Cory was always a bugaboo in that work, but...
That's the mind, you signed that one, too?
Yes, sir. This is the one you have to take to the registry.
She's really got one pen here?
We're trying to save the town money.
They made you bring your own pen, too.
Yes, may I ask which part, which one this is? I'm not aware of the name. It's all good, we, 89 Old Street, just come to attend a meeting.
This is a...
It's okay.
It's on North Hatfield Road, there's a, there's a greenhouse on North Hatfield Road, then, yeah, then there's a gold house, then there's a little red house by the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
It's just...
He's got a little house that he rents out, Bernie.
Okay, yeah, there's the big house, and there's the little house, yeah.
I wouldn't even say how that went in.
This is on North Hatfield Road, just, just...
Good thing you didn't say that when the meeting was here.
Just south of the railroad tracks.
Oh, my God.
Where the, where the railroad crosses, and it runs out to Straits Road.
On the Straits?
It's farmland.
North Hatfield Road, Straits Road.
It's all farmland.
Wow, so it's run through the APR?
Yes.
So why, they said nothing against your house, you're going a little, not, not, have you, uh...
No, the house, they, they indicated to me that they didn't want the house in the property.
Yeah, the house is...
So that's why I'm pulling the house out.
Right.
Because the only thing left is dirt.
And they're not making any more.
That's right, that's right. So, yeah, so, it's always been my father, my intent to put it in APR, except we never got this process years ago to pull the house out.
If I have to, I would be...
Yeah, you get minimum five, unless you're mudding somebody that has a great piece going in, and I think they weigh it, because it's contiguous.
I have them somewhere. Yes, I do, right here.
I talked to somebody there, because my next...
Right here.
If it's contiguous, and it's, yeah, it has to be contiguous.
So then outside of that, there are some, there are some houses that are just on date?
Yeah, but they have to be next to the parcel that's going in. That's what they told me.
Yeah, they have to agree, okay, yes.
That's what they told me. So you're going to give me anything or not?
No, we're going to, we're going to hold these hostage till you bring that disc in.
Okay.
Do you have a rubber band?
Ron's going to bring the disc in, I'm not going to...
Well, then we'll...
I can tell you.
I can call, yeah, and then Ron can only just deliver them, I can pick them up at his house.
Yeah, whatever. Okay. We, we need four copies for the town, so, and you can have the rest.
Take as many as you want.
Okay.
I paid a lot of money for them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you see what five colleges paid Marty Holich for that piece? $953,000.
I hope the, I hope the town got their tax money, their back tax money.
Yeah, I hope they, yeah, I hope they got the back tax for all of this stuff. I almost choked when I read that, geez.
It's 11 acres?
Huh?
11 acres?
Yeah, something like that. $100,000 an acre, that's pretty good money.
Hey, you want something bad enough, you buy it.
That's right. If you want to live in Hatfield bad enough, you'll pay the price.
I make a motion that we, to accept the meeting, to accept the...
Minutes?
Minutes of the meeting of May 4, 2016.
Second.
As written.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reorganization.
What about July and August? Are we going to try to take off, or we going to be able to?
Do we have anything pending?
We have a July coming up.
I don't know when Jeanie Mazick will be back, if she can get her ducks in a row for July.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Or...
We have Lisa Birken coming in, if we can get everything processed on that. That's the only thing I have at this point.
Okay, but she's got to get stuff in in the next two weeks, because you...
Because you got to put an ad in paper.
She has to get in this week.
Next week, yeah, to get it published.
She's coming in tomorrow, so we should be...
Oh, so she has all her stuff?
Yeah, I think so.
So we'll meet July?
Yeah, that would be July 6.
July 6, okay. Oh, I see, got her right here.
And then you have August off and come back on 7 September, how does that sound?
When's Labor Day?
September 7, yeah. We're going to have August off, you think?
Yeah, let's do that, we've done that traditionally.
September 7, good deal, all right.
Okay, now, we need to organize, we need a chairman.
I'd like to nominate Bob Wagner. I know he's not here, and that's not...
I second the nomination. Or the other alternative is to, like, the selectman, the, the person who was, who was up for reelection next year, in other words, the last year of your term, serves as the chairman, that's how selectmen do it, so every year there's a, there's a new chairman. We can go that way, or we can nominate Bob Wagner. He weren't here, so we volunteered you.
What a dirty thing to do.
That's what happens, that's what happens when you're not here.
When you don't show up, yeah. Well, I second the nomination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, what about a clerk?
Who's the clerk now?
Paul is, aren't you?
Oh, Paul.
Clerk slash...
See, I might be gone a lot next year.
Well, I'm going a lot, I know.
I would not, I'll, I'll nominate Paul Laddie as the clerk.
No, no, not, I haven't got enough experience. No, 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 not yet. What do you, give me another year, year and a half, two years, five years.
Well, the clerk, the clerk doesn't do anything, Wilma does all the work, you just have to look it over.
You just look at the notes.
You bastards are all going to, excuse me, you guys are all going to be in Florida, and we're going to be stuck up here, me and Sassy and Wagner, for the winter? How long are you going to be in Florida, Doc, though? Will you fly home like Barley? No goddamn way are you coming home like Barley. Barley flies in on a whim. You're not going to fly in for a planning board meeting? That could get to be really tough.
How about Ron Sassy, see, he isn't here.
That sounds, that sounds like a good idea.
Okay, I nominate Ron Sassy for clerk.
I second the nomination.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wait until they see this on television.
Next meeting ought to be a fun meeting.
Wait until they see this on television.
Oh, man.
Any other business?
That is tough.
You don't have anything else for Wilma?
Yeah, Bob, Paul makes a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second. Paul in favor, aye.
Aye.
Call opposed, nay.